Lord, we pray for Oman.
Thavai Bharaati oru prathikidu.
Lord, we pray for India.
Thavai nindu sape oru prathikidu.
Lord, we pray for our church.
Nindu talamore oru prathikidu.
Lord, we pray for our children.
Yes, ondu prathichadhe.
Pray.
Hallelujah. Vaathurandhu vandhal paasavayam devate sudichu prathichadhe.
Open your mouth for some time, praise Him and pray.
Uru vali unarvina, unarvinaai prathichadhe.
For a great revival, can you pray?
Atmaakal rechakai prathichadhe.
Can we pray for the salvation of the soul?
Yes, nindu prathikibattan ne asathan arail, avai nindu avishigalkum marbadiyana.
When you pray, you will experience great deliverance, extraordinary deliverance in your shoes.
Nindu avishigalkum marbadiyana.
You will get an answer for your children.
Nindu avishigalkum marbadiyana.
You are being healed.
Abberdne chedhutadhe.
Can we take up the burden?
Yes, dhabanagathanavishabana adigasi yadare. Rikhabala vishamthara riba kovprathana, prathana. Indha tham meetingiduai prathikya.
Pray for today's meeting.
Devi ki abhishtiruvivoyipanaai prathikya.
Can we pray whether the anointed man of God will be used?
Rakamana divalkavrimanadigasi. Rikala vishaidamanadigati divalkavrimanadigasi. Unarvinaai, unarvinaai thavai, unarvinaai, unarvinaai. Unarvinaai revival, revival. Ni maskachunarana, maskachunarana. Omaanunarana, unarana. Nindu talamore anikhiyikappadana, thalamore anikhiyikappadana. Ni generation anikhiyikappadana. Aari nachitche pogarada, aari nachitche pogarada. Elavre chavadana, nithi diva prabikana. Prathana. Yes, vinda krushila finish workil, elavri missionsikana.
Everyone should believe in the finished work of Jesus.
Avai devasnekatthu elavri variyana.
Everyone should know the love of God.
Yes, vinda snekatthu variyana.
Everyone should know the love of Jesus.
Nammada kudumbakal variyana.
Our families should know.
Nammada talamore variyana.
Our children should know.
Nammada raja variyana.
Our nation should know.
Ondu prathichadhe. Rakamana vishamthara riba shaidamanavachi. Judamanabana balavishigana balavachi. Unarvinaai, unarvinaai revival, revival. Yes, rakamana kadharushamanad. Uru puttana abhishekadhuai prathikya.
Can we pray for oppression, I think?
Uru pudu sakthikaai prathikya.
Can we pray for renewed strength?
Uru pudu bantiduai prathikya. Uru pudiya birtiduai prathikya.
Can we pray for new strength?
Rakamana divashaidamanadigati divalkavrimanadigasi. Adenakadagadana udamanabashigana balavishamanadigasi. Rikhabala vishamthara balavishigana. Judamanabana balavishigana balavachi. Adimanabana balavishigana balavishigana. Yes, prathichadhe. Nindu avikampinikkuvendi, nindu choliyastavanti oru prathikya.
Can we pray for our companies, can we pray for the places where we work?
Nindu avishigalkum prathikana, nindu elavri oru prathichadhe.
Think of all the things that we've proved to pray for.
Uru prathana ivu ne atma varnayapadathe.
Let the spirit of prayer fill this place.
Rakamana diva, indiraathri ivudamanna vekthi elavri saukyamagana.
Let every person come here and be healed.
Indiraathri ivudamanna vekthi yes, vinda snekatthu tirichariyana.
Every person here should understand the love of Jesus.
Indu devi ki adigaram velipadana.
Today, the authority of God will be revealed.
Duraatmakal vittubogana.
All the evil spirits should leave.
Elavri divisions maripogana.
Every division should go away.
Elavri asasthalakal maripogana.
Every restless should go away.
Elavri confusion maripogana.
Every confusion should go away.
Yes, vinda namathil sneham naragathe, sneham naragathe.
Let love be filled.
Uru vekthi sneham naragathe.
Let love be filled in every person's heart.
Sneham naragathe, sneham naragathe.
Let love be filled in every person's heart.
Rakamana vishamthara balavishigana balavachi. Adjamanagadagadana udamanadigati diva vishamthara. Jamana balavishigana balavachi. Indiraathri alputanal velipadana prathikya, prathikya.
Can we pray for miracles to happen tonight?
Ni raja thayi omanai oru prathikya.
Can we pray for Oman?
Nammada bharaati oru prathikya.
Can we pray for India?
Nammada sape oru prathikya.
Can we pray for our church?
Sape ladka unarvinaai prathikya.
Can we pray for the revival of our church?
Nammada talamore oru prathikya.
Can we pray for our children?
Nammada kunyagale oru prathikya.
Can we pray for our children?
Yes, rakamana indha thayi yes, vinda suushikai prathikya.
Can we pray for today's ministry?
Mademana balavishigana balavishigana. Udamanabana balavishigana balavishigana. Adjamanabana balavishigana balavishigana. Judamanabana balavishigana balavishigana. Rabanabana raja balavishigana balavishigana. Rikala vishaidamanadigati diva vishigana balavishigana. Adjamanabana balavishigana balavishigana. Ribanagattuna vishamtha rabashiva. Indamanagadagadana udamanagattina gattshamtha rabishamtha. Divanagadagadana udamanavashamtha rabuda. Indamanabana udamanetthuna vachamtha rabhamtha rabishamtha. Yes, prathichelavri vaathuranga, vaathuranga.
Everyone open your mouth and pray.
Atma vil, atma vil prathikya.
Pray in the spirit.
Sakthi oru prathikya.
Pray with all your strength.
Atma bharaatthode prathikya.
Pray with the burden of spirit.
Vali bharaatthode prathikya.
Pray with the great burden of the spirit.
Rakala vishamthara balavishigana balavishigana. Jaganah, pidave, vali va, vali va sayenam. Pidave unarvinaai, unarvinaai.
Revival is happening.
Sanithyam, sanithi, devas sanithi narayathe.
Let the presence of God fill this place.
Parishothaathma saithu narayathe.
Let the power of the Holy Spirit fill this place.
A glory narayathe.
Let the glory fill this place.
Devas sanithi narayanai stotram.
Thank you Lord for filling it with your presence.
Atma nadigil oligundana ishtotram.
We thank you that the spirit, river of the spirit is flowing.
Atma nadigil oligundana ishtotram.
We thank you for the rivers of the spirit that are flowing.
Parishothaathma provagatina ishtotram.
We thank you for the flow of the Holy Spirit.
Parishothaathma provagatina ishtotram.
We thank you for the flow of the Holy Spirit.
Uru vekthi thodudana ishtotram.
Thank you for touching every person.
Vali amathengal ka ishtotram.
We thank you for great transformation.
Vali unarvinaai ishtotram.
We thank you for great changes.
Vali unarvinaai ishtotram.
We thank you for great revival.
Vekthi elavri narathe.
Let the people be revived.
Kudumbakal narathe.
Let there be revival in families.
Saba narathe.
Let the church be revived.
Desh narathe. Desh narathe.
Let the nation be revived.
Ha ha. Riba na balav, saba, saba, anikhiyikappadathe.
Let the church be blessed.
Sape de adriyalvi chalamagathe.
Let the boundaries be expanded.
Ami anegar, anegar, yes, vinda snekatthu tirichu sape vekthi varathe.
Let many understand the love of Jesus and come to the church.
Pidave nindu yes, vinda subidana amathurimichu varidho.
Father in Jesus' name, we come together, Lord.
Pidave nindu prathana oru angodabetchu oru harbichu thaai meetinge.
Lord, we pray, start this prayer, everywhere prayer with prayers supplication.
Angeda vali glory irigikuthu naai nannii.
We thank you that your grace is flowing here.
Apa, annu vanaai nannii parayinu.
Lord, we thank you that you're here.
Nindu avyettumile sandoshima de parayinada.
The greatest joy in our life is...
Sodhathile dadhi nindu avyuttu naana.
That the heavenly daddy is here with us.
Nindu avyechena kustu nindu avyuttu naana.
That our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ is there with us.
Nindu avyekida parishothama avyuttu naana.
That the Holy Spirit who leads us is there with us.
Avas sanithi manipuchu oru michepada purthirikuthu.
Lord, we experience that presence seated at your feet.
Nindu sape anikhiyikachinu nannii.
Thank you for blessing the church.
Uru aarathara anikhiyikachinu nannii.
Thank you for blessing the worship.
Sape avishatthu maranikhiyikachinu nannii.
Thank you for knowing, but blessing the anointed of God.
Sape kudumbakal anikhiyikachinu nannii.
Thank you for blessing the families of the church.
Sagodri maranikhiyikachinu nannii.
Thank you for blessing all the brothers.
Sagodri maranikhiyikachinu nannii.
Thank you for blessing all the sisters.
Nindu avyekina talamore anikhiyikachinu nannii.
Thank you for blessing all our children.
Nindu vinda suushi anikhiyikachinu nannii.
Thank you for blessing all the ministries.
Angeda vajana sakthamaaithe, indiraathri vellamboavakkunna, abhishtiruvinirti naai nannii.
We thank you for enabling the man of God to feed the children with spiritual food, Lord.
Devas sanithi, ami angeda kuruvaril nindu varayinu.
We cover under your presence, Lord.
Angu vali chidana ishtotram.
Thank you for doing great things.
Parishothama adiyasana naitsana ishtotram.
Thank you Holy Spirit for leading us from beginning to the end.
Avayeshkutu vinnana amathithanee.
In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen. Nindu vinda sandoshima unna.
How many have you filled with joy?
Ondu varane, sandoshima unna. Are you happy today? Ondu varao, varke varaa. Varke varaa, ondu, ondu sandoshima na.
Are you happy?
Nammada kartavu unna kuthu sandoshima.
If our Lord is here, it's joyful.
Nindu avyippudam parayeshu unna kuthu sandoshima.
I always tell if Jesus is here, it's joy.
Nammada lifeene maathu yes, vinda subiduva.
Because Jesus Christ has changed our life.
Oh, nammada lifeene changeethu yes, vinda subiduva.
Because Jesus Christ has changed our life.
Adu guda sandosham.
That is why there is joy.
Amen. Nammada kartavanu unna vithu nammada kuduthu vandu parayinu sandoshima.
It brings great joy because Jesus Christ has come into our hearts.
Stidimachya devam.
Jesus Christ who changed the state of our life.
Yes, vanna stidimari.
If Jesus Christ came, the situation has changed.
Bible swishesuvu ne keshu odunno. Boyo, yes, vinda paranyo, odunno, apudamunna idatunna.
In the Bible, we see where Jesus came, Jesus went, or Jesus said something, there miracle has happened.
Indu vinda kalpudangal vena.
How many of you need a miracle?
Indu vinda kalpudangal vena.
How many of you need a miracle?
Indu vinda saukyangal vena.
How many of you need healing?
Indu vinda life will change vena.
How many of you need a change?
Indu vinda athpiyudhu bustiprabikana.
How many of you need flourishing in their spiritual life?
Indu vinda chaadiyidhaka.
Can we stand, rise to our feet?
Nindu sakthi oru vekthi devatiyara thikya.
Can we praise the Lord with all our strength?
Elavri maranaradikya.
Can we forget everything and praise Him?
Uru michepikam parana, devatiyara thikya.
Can we praise?
Yes, vee. Enikhaai marichavane, maranaththay chaychavane, innan jeevikunnavane. Enikhaai marichavane, maranaththay chaychavane, Ninn kripagale nyan paadidum, nin snehatthay nyan vaadtidum. Cheydananmagal nyan ortidum, yesuve. Ninn kripagale nyan paadidum, nin snehatthay nyan vaadtidum. Cheydananmagal nyan ortidum, yesuve. Ella naamathin meethu, ooyanana naamamidu. Thoodanmara bagalinnu vaadthunna naamamidu. Ella naamathin meethu, ooyanana naamamidu. Thoodanmara bagalinnu vaadthunna naamamidu. Ella namun paadidum, murakkalu madangidum ee. Sarvatin yogin, ee. Ella namun paadidum, murakkalu madangidum ee. Sarvatin yogin, ee. Ninn kripagale nyan paadidum, nin snehatthay nyan vaadtidum. Cheydananmagal nyan ortidum, yesuve.
Vichal tharupadiyane.
Ninn kripagale nyan paadidum, nin snehatthay nyan vaadtidum. Cheydananmagal nyan ortidum, yesuve.
Vichal kudi.
Ninn kripagale nyan paadidum, nin snehatthay nyan vaadtidum. Cheydananmagal nyan ortidum, yesuve.
Vichal tharupadiyane.
Alkugamandriyavan, veeranam devam. Niltyam pidahumavan, samadhana thinnu. Alkugamandriyavan, veeranam devam. Niltyam pidahumavan, samadhana thinnu. Aaradhit paanyogin, ashitit paanyogin. Sarvatin yogin, ee. Aaradhit paanyogin, ashitit paanyogin. Sarvatin yogin, ee. Ninn kripagale nyan paadidum, nin snehatthay nyan vaadtidum. Cheydananmagal nyan ortidum, yesuve.
Vichal kudi.
Ninn kripagale nyan paadidum, nin snehatthay nyan vaadtidum. Cheydananmagal nyan ortidum, yesuve.
Vichal kudi, ninn kripagale.
Ninn kripagale nyan paadidum, nin snehatthay nyan vaadtidum. Cheydananmagal nyan ortidum, yesuve.
Vichal kudi.
Singing, Jesus. The Lamb of God, worthy is your name. Jesus, you're the Lamb of God, worthy is your name. Jesus. And Jesus, the Lamb of God, worthy is your name. Jesus, the Lamb of God, worthy is your name. And you are my strength when I am weak. You are the treasure that I seek. You are my all in all. Seeking you as a precious drug, long to give up, but be a fool. You are my all in all. Jesus, the Lamb of God, worthy is your name. You're my Jesus, the Lamb of God, worthy is your name. Jesus. Jesus, the Lamb of God, worthy is your name. Jesus, the Lamb of God, worthy is your name. Taking my sin, my cross, my shame, rising again, I'll bless your name. You are my all in all. And when I fall down, you pick me up. When I am dry, you fill my cup. You are my all in all. Taking my sin, my cross, my shame, rising again, I'll bless your name. You are my all in all. And when I fall down, you pick me up. When I am dry, you fill my cup. You are my all in all. Jesus, the Lamb of God, worthy is your name. You're my Jesus, the Lamb of God, worthy is your name. Jesus, the Lamb of God, worthy is your name. Jesus, you're the Lamb of God, worthy is your name. Singing, Jesus, the Lamb of God, worthy is your name. Jesus, the Lamb of God, worthy is your name. Shaariyadereva shaarava shaad. Judanadeereva shaadadeereva. Suranabaraadeereva shaadadeereva. Judanadeereva shaadadeereva.
Vichal kudi.
Judanadeereva shaadadeereva. Judanadeereva shaadadeereva. Judanadeereva shaadadeereva. Judanadeereva shaadadeereva. Indhala vanaadeereva. Judanadeereva shaadadeereva. Judanadeereva shaadadeereva. Koriyadara vachivarvaidu. Judanadeereva shaadadeereva. Shalalaylani daad. Shadadeereva. Judanadeereva. Koriyadara vachivarvaidu. Judanadeereva. Judanadeereva. Shadadeereva. Indhala vanaadeereva. Judanadeereva. Shadadeereva. Judanadeereva. Koriyadara vachivarvaidu. Judanadeereva. Koudanara vachivarvaidu. Koudanara vachivarvaidu. Koriyadara vachivarvaidu. Judanadeereva. Koriyadara vachivarvaidu. Judanadeereva. Judanadeereva. Koriyadara vachivarvaidu. Judanadeereva. Koriyadara vachivarvaidu. Koudanara vachivarvaidu. Judanadeereva. Koudanara vachivarvaidu. Judanadeereva. Koudanara vachivarvaidu. Koudanara vachivarvaidu. Koudanara vachivarvaidu. Koriyadara vachivarvaidu. Koudanara 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 vachivarvaidu. Koudanadeereva. Koudanara vachivarvaidu. 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 Koriyadara vachivarvaidu. Koriyadara vachivarvaidu. Koriyadara vachivarvaidu. You are the Lord. You are the Lord. You are the Lord. Shaadadeereva. Come on, church, let your praise begin to rise. Shaadadeereva. The King is in this place. Your healer is in the room. Jesus, the Lamb of God is here. The name that is above every other name. The name of Jesus. The name that is above every depression, every anxiety. His name is in this place. And when He exalts His name, He reigns above it all. Singing, Jesus, the Lamb of God, worthy is your name. Jesus, the Lamb of God, worthy is your name. Jesus, the Lamb of God, worthy is your name. Jesus, the Lamb of God, worthy is your name. Stuti galthum, pogal chakkum, yogenae, yesuve. Stuti galthum, pogal chakkum, yogenae, yesuve. Apa? Marakkukun, kachayaninyum, kaanum ee, suve.
Adu kanduntu paadiyadhe.
Veeruvilakki, naduvil, shobakku, nanaaya.
You are the treasure that I seek. You are my all in all.
Chir no raka padiga, mara.
Sing along together loudly.
When I fall down, you pick me up. When I am dry, you fill my cup. You are my all in all.
Esuwee.
Jesus, the Lamb of God.
Oh, the presence is moving. Esu nalaman, esu srehaban, esu srehabana.
Jesus love.
Ma dayva kunnada.
He is Lamb of God.
Oh, ha naavu hetu malidha, yuakya malidha.
Lamb of God, worthy is your name.
Esuwee.
Jesus, Lamb of God, worthy is your name.
Akar esu kartaavanin amdi karangal edichya, shaktamayadha maavu kurti.
We will give glory to Jesus.
And the two raka, esuwee yundu viliyee.
Can we call out loud Jesus?
Attho thola esuvenesegikindundo, atho thola uchathil, avalipathil, on esuwee yundu viliyee.
As much as you love Jesus, call out Jesus loudly.
Amen, illor kivirikya.
Please be seated.
Enikariyam ningal esu kartaavanin utti sengikindu.
I know that you love Jesus Christ the Lord.
Akarthaavu vaanditundu.
The Lord is here.
Amada saanithu shaktamayatundu.
His presence is there mightily here.
Amada kurvayum karunum shaktamay chaliyekindu.
His mercy and grace is moving mightily.
Dayva namaya nikiyeket.
May the Lord bless us all.
Namada prayer ne munaandhi vusamana.
This is the third day of our prayer.
Amen kartaavanin abishadu namadu vilundu.
God's mighty man of God is there in our midst.
Pastor Danny kai stodikindu.
I praise God for Pastor Danny.
Toosu sujkal kai kartaavanin abishadu ne karangal edichya welcome chedhatay.
Can we clap our hands and welcome Pastor Danny?
Praise God, hallelujah. Ulpati busugama tamutha nala maakyam.
Genesis chapter eight verse four. And the waters decreased continually until the tenth month, and the tenth month on the first day of the month, the tops of the mountain were seen.
Praise God, hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
Nellam namal nirtiyadu orkunundu. Orman ellal, nellaveraatey arengil innu pudhata vanditundu.
Anybody who was not there yesterday, you're there here today.
Ay, 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 yo, nengakariyamo janendu prasangik.
Do you know what I preached yesterday?
Yada ndabaaki, prishutthatmaavu nadathandu bole, ndabaake pohanaita gregyuana.
I want to go as the Holy Spirit leads and I want to continue there.
Naddu misshunku allakanda, niggasana thidhal adachad.
Every eye closed?
Prishutthatmaave.
Holy Spirit.
Nengalaniyekinani varayinu.
We thank you, Lord.
Angan nengaladu nadu vilundalo.
You're there in our midst.
Ulliyakariyala cheyan nengaladu nadu vilundalo.
You're there in our midst to do great things, Lord.
Nengalakandu madithatala.
We are not fed up looking at things.
Nengal madipikindu allala.
It's not that we are, things are making us weary.
Veendum nengal viswasaathil orapikinnu.
And making us firm in faith.
Veendum nengalai manasandritalekka nadathunu.
Again leading us into repentance.
Veendum nengalai dayvatooda dipikinnu.
Again leading us more closer to God.
Dayvatindashabdevum pravarti even the ratri undagata.
Let your voice and your work be seen here tonight.
Bayi hallinagatam madithirikina arengil undangila.
Lord, in this hall, if there is anybody who is tired and weary.
Lifeinde edu bhagamana avare madipikindu, avare talathikalayindu.
Which area of their life is making them fed up and making them weary?
Avada eshu indu veliyakariyala cheda.
Look, Jesus, you do great things there.
Veliyakariyala cheyanam.
You should do great things there.
Veliyakariyala cheyanam.
You should do great things there.
Swastamayata avare dayva saanithitil irikana.
Let them sit in great rest in the presence of God.
Alattunnela prashnangalum manasildinu dhure kodi pogata.
Everything that is troubling them, let it go away from their mind.
Shathathirikinnu sakala prashnangalum manasugalindu dhodi marata.
Every problem that is distracting their minds, let it go away from there.
Angan gana cheyinathanaitanani varayinu.
Thank you, Lord, for doing it.
Esu vandathigarama naamathil.
In Jesus mighty name we pray.
Hallelujah, karamayarthi shabthamayarthi kara kavu.
Lift up your hands.
Nidhratriyam prishutthatmaava namal odusamsariyakata.
May the Holy Spirit speak to us tonight.
Namal vaichavaki nankormeundu.
I hope you remember the words that we read yesterday.
Ulpati etta nal.
Genesis eight four.
Avada naanam namal nirlasamsariyachu thodangiya.
That's where we started yesterday.
Nellam namal nirtiyabhaga arkinkil ormeundu.
Anybody remembers where we stopped yesterday?
Maray endanannariyatila.
They do not know what rain was.
Paksha epthakampanadu.
But he still built the ark.
Nellaparanakariyala kia ormeundallo.
Do you remember what we said yesterday?
Dayva nohaedu maathramay paranjalu.
God told only to know, huh?
Nyaayvadi verunadu, el, ah, community mooduven anupavikyanalada.
The entire community is going to experience the judgment.
Paksha, adinagatou oranoodu maathramay solution divam paranjadudu thulu.
But the Lord gave the solution only to one person.
Namal viswasaichya dayva orikariyame pikimbal.
When God trusts us and gives us best or something upon us.
Kooda nikindavare chalappachoodikim idhe prishutthatmaavu nodan nengalum prarthikindu.
The people who are with us, they will say, the same Holy Spirit we pray to.
Idhe communitylaan nengalum idikindu.
We are in the same community.
Nengal kaarkum undagata velipadun ninnakamathramay undayullo.
How is it that only you get the revelation and we do not?
Ah, choodiyatine mumbil dayvam thanna velipadane tarailidharu.
So when you face such a question, don't set aside the revelation that God has given you.
Maray endanannakkaanikyaadepthakampanayam parayinu.
The Lord will ask you to build an ark without showing you what this rain is like.
Maray puttiyala knowledge absence ayrikyo, absent ayrikyo.
The knowledge about rain would be absent.
Abada vandadu faithum obedienceumana.
There we need only faith and obedience.
Indhatarku maninupthakampanayano.
And then the ark should be built.
Abadam berayanam namal nikindu.
That's where we stopped yesterday.
Ormeundanupratisikindu.
I hope you will remember this.
Hallelujah.
Amen.
Hallelujah. Hallelujah. I oru message rendaita prasangikindu ndadprayasa undanunariyamo.
Do you know what is the difficulty of splitting a message?
Namal flightingene edutthita oru rangeekonda nirtu.
We take off a flight and we'll stop at a range.
Abadunadu landiyam patthatila.
It's very difficult to land from there.
Veendu adedukandanda.
Again, it has to take off.
Ah rangeel ninnu bakit poyale, adinu oru oru, ndu varayinu, atmaavundachalana undathodu.
If you have to continue from that altitude, then only the movement of the spirit can be experienced.
Jenaan endu orichinda.
That's what I think.
Pinay kartaavanin endin cheyambatum.
So I believe that the Lord can do anything.
Enikivatathu prishutthatmaavu vatu.
What I cannot do, Holy Spirit can.
Aduodan ningalanta koodanikindu.
So please be with me.
Amen, hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
Shadijay, noha pthakampanadu.
So Noah built the ark.
Noha indhatu marekivendi vitiyayana.
So Noah is waiting for the rain.
Illanu parajam marekivendi vitiyayana.
Everyone repeat after me, waiting for the rain.
Marekivendi vitiyayana.
He's waiting for the rain.
Pthakatina agatupraveshuju.
They entered the ark.
Pthakatina atthukereyirikya.
They are sitting inside the ark.
Nengalabhagam vaishan ningakumanisalavu kiri, door adachorana maraveedila.
If you read that portion, you'll understand immediately after entering inside the ark, the rain did not start.
Nengakariyamo athro daysa noha indhatirinana.
Do you know how many days Noah was there inside?
Noha, nohaedakudumbu, murkangalum gude athro daysa, adinagattha marekimumbirinana nengakariyamo.
Do you know how long did Noah and his family and the animals were there before the rain?
Arkinkil varayamo, aranoa. Eedh daysa irinu.
Seven days they were waiting.
Eedh daysa irinu.
They waited seven days.
Or aalcha vitiyus namalakannakina.
They waited one week according to our calculations.
Akathirivadi ladachorana maraveedila.
As soon as they entered in and the door was shut, the rain did not come.
Door muththo adachu.
The door was completely shut.
Door muththo, vadil muththo adachu.
The door was completely shut.
Agathum murkangalundu.
There are animals inside.
Porathunavai agathoodukere unni yariyadila.
I do not know if the air outside will come inside.
Karne velatina atthun reshavaramindu undakisada.
Because this is made to escape from water.
Chalappu velatina adi kuda chalappu inginupungimoli veruvarayi.
Maybe it will take a dip inside the water and come up.
Apo oxygen idam, oxygen karamindu kirtathidam patthatila.
So we cannot have holes for oxygen to come in.
Muththong kili thadachadakuwa.
It is completely sealed.
Ala chooda arigathu.
It may be very hot.
Aram maraveed thodangiila.
Because rain has not yet started.
Maraveed thodangiayarane korchadhanupakakityana.
If it had started to rain, it would have been probably a bit more cooler.
Oru daysa muththay choodanathirikya.
So one full day they are inside this heat.
Choodu matrali, murkangalalaidinathundu.
Not only that, the animals are there along with that.
Avare sahikannam.
He has to bear them also.
Avada bahalam sahikannam.
He has to bear their ruckus.
Avada smellisahikannam.
He has to bear their smell.
Porathum marayila.
And also rain is not there outside.
Pratisiya sadhana malnila.
What they were expecting it has not yet come.
Oru daysan kariyuu.
One day is over.
Randu daysan kariyuu.
Two days are over.
Moonu daysan kariyuu.
Three days are over.
Di vadiladiyum thodachadu noha thoranila.
Noah still didn't open the door that God shut.
Naali daysan kariyuu.
Four days are over.
Noha vadil thoranila.
Noah did not open the door.
Anjidh daysan kariyuu.
Five days are over.
Maraveedila.
The rain did not come.
Noha poratharangiila.
Noah did not come outside.
Aru daysan kariyuu.
Six days are over.
Maraveedila.
The rain did not come.
Noha thoranila.
Noah did not open the door.
Avanda prasangathin amayam varayadhirinapaprasangan nirti ilanamathraalla.
Not only that, he did not stop his message when they did not say amen.
Dayvam paranjathanenu udanakanaadhirinutum avanda viswasmshaychila.
Even though he did not see what God told him, his faith did not come down.
Amay paranjay.
Amen.
Amay paranjay.
Amen.
Ipam noha anupavikindu randamata struggle undadariyamo.
Do you know what is the struggle that Noah is experiencing right now?
Iipani nadakkumbedum prasangichapurino noha pariyasi chotiriveerundu.
There are many people who made fun of Noah when he was building the ark.
Iichoodatidinathukere kore, patimbuuchensimbo, ellathunayam gudakondana, adinagatukudumbadukereyirikya.
Along with his family, he is sitting inside this with the animals.
Door adachu.
The door is also shut.
Naatharimoththi ipai venavilekinnu pranthanal, mudhu pranthanana viliyek.
So the people outside are calling him not only just crazy, but really crazy.
Avare viliyidhikida marendi.
They are asking him, where's the rain?
Ni varayana sadhana indi.
Where is the thing that you said would come?
Ivarana etru muddhri pariyasi kiputtanandu noha.
This is where Noah must have been made fun of the most.
Panger parishnaaivi.
This was a great test.
Dayvam paranjathadu bole anisirichittu.
Even after obeying God exactly as he said.
Namal anisirijayathukereyirikya.
We have obeyed and we are sitting inside.
Idin nadakunun namal paranjapakaliyakivarundu.
There are people who made fun when we said that this might happen.
Avare ngirnoke nikya.
They are also watching and waiting.
Onnamat daysam maraveedila.
First day, the rain didn't come.
Randamath daysam bedila.
Second day, it didn't come.
Moonamath daysam bedila.
Third day, it didn't come.
Naathariviliyachodakum vedanamne varanjada inganurisada nila.
The people around will say, that day itself, I told you this won't come.
Ni varayinu urisada nila.
Like this thing won't, this doesn't exist.
Appraye nengal varanjali idunndathonala.
That time, we told you this is just your imagination.
Kaana idun nengal aarim kandila.
Because we have never seen something like this.
Nengal aaru adu dikkettila.
We never heard this word.
Nengal aaru velipad kandila.
We never saw this revelation.
Ah, naathathinaathu neranga.
Come out from that smelly place.
Shuddavaayushosikya.
Come and take breath of the clean air.
Etta namgoda kili thadachapata kathirinu, irinu verkuwa.
Eight people are sitting inside this covered place.
Erangiwa.
Come out of that place.
Iibelli viliyakathu erangaridu avada nikannam.
Inside this challenge, don't come out, stay there.
Id. Iisituationathooda panchutthatmaavu varani, isituationathooda pono thirivina thundan nenuduparindu.
The Holy Spirit told me, many people are going through such a situation seated here.
Avare chayam boonadu mumbingana varanju, ingana dayva nenudusamsariyachundu.
They said before starting out, this is what the Lord told me.
Anner aaru avare, ndu varanjay, supportayidittu.
That time, nobody supported them.
Adukarini thanaathupraveshuju, anisirichu.
After that, they entered inside.
Indhatu vi paranjado, dayvam paranjado, ndunkaanambatthundila.
And after that, still they are not able to see what God said.
Nerthepariyasi chaviripparin kalyakuwa.
Many people who made fun of, they are still making fun of them.
Tiri cherangi varanirbandikya.
They are telling them to come out.
Anganolavari i roominaathipayiriponda.
There are many people like that seated in this room.
Nengaludhatmaavu jambareyata.
I want to tell you in the spirit.
Nengal kandatethi pooridila.
You have not mistaken, what you have seen is not wrong.
Dayvam paranjayatethi ittila.
What God has said is not wrong.
Ipoldum avane viswasaichannam.
You can still trust him.
Ipoldum avane viswasaichannam.
You should still trust him.
Onnadithirikindu varanjay, ipoldum avane viswasaichannam varane.
Tell the person next to you, you should still trust him.
Eni adhutha kattona, adhutha kattona.
Listen to me.
Maraveedu na dayvam varanjay.
He said that it will rain.
Maraveedu na varanjay.
He said it will rain.
Om noha indene, mori naanali maraveerunay.
The rain comes from up.
Noha indene ceilinge soundukekunu nokeeriyaya.
Noah is waiting for the sound to fall on the ceiling.
Mori nandeli virenundu.
Is something falling up?
Mori shabthankukekundu.
Is there sound coming from the top?
Indene shadijirikya.
He is listening.
Maraveedila.
But there's no rain.
Nengakariyamo.
Do you know?
Adhim maraveedila.
In the beginning, the rain did not fall.
Dayvam paranjapralayam thodakandakandariyamo.
Do you know how the flood started, what God said?
Ariyamo. Avan aadiyuda uravaya kiri.
He opened the depths of the earth.
Noha mori nisoundu varan nokeeriyaya.
Noah is waiting for the sound to come from heaven.
Oris shabdevum kakekundala.
He is not hearing any voice.
Pasad dayvam avan pradikshichasatalathunun naladu, veeru directionini dayvam cheduthodangiayarunu.
But God started it from somewhere else, not from where Noah expected it to start.
Aadiyuda urava, indu vachasamudratindavurava bhoomi adiila.
That means he opened the depths of the sea.
Avan pradikshichadu mori mekathindamori niverunan nokeeriyaya.
He was expecting to come from the clouds up.
Pasad dayvam kiri vittadadiina.
But God opened the depths.
Namal pradikshikindu directioninaiyikatilla dayvam thodakandu.
Maybe God will not start from the first direction where we expected.
Adindan mere opposit.
It would be exactly the opposite.
Namal inganamnoke nikim.
We will be watching and waiting.
Iduvari variim.
It may come from this side.
Nellani pradikshikindu variyundu, variyunnu pradikshikindu variyundu.
There is a way that you are expecting.
Endakudumban rakshapadu vannu ni pradikshikindu variyundu.
There is a way that you are expecting that my family will be saved.
Saapavaalari vannu namal pradikshikindu variyundu.
There is a way that we are expecting the church will grow.
Business, vaalari vannu namal pradikshikindu variyundu.
There is a way that we are expecting our business to grow.
Namal avada mathram shadijirikya.
We will concentrate only on that place.
Namal avada mathram shadijirikya.
That's where we are concentrating.
Anganolavaru janaatmaavi parayata.
To them, I'm telling you in the spirit.
Avan aadiyuda uravaya kiri.
He opened the depths of the sea.
Avan aadiyuda uravaya kiri.
He opened the depths of the sea.
Avan lo ulagathasushthikimbal, viphagitsavurava.
That when he was creating the creation.
Bhoomiyam mulivanimoodininna samudratindavurava.
The depths of the sea was covering the earth.
Karayevairdichapavana daanradchadainu.
When he separated the land, that time he closed it.
Adu dayvam reopenjaydu.
He reopened it at that time.
Oh, adu dayvam reopenjaydu.
Reopened it at that time.
Manishanda pradikshaenamariyamo.
Do you know what is man expecting?
Manishanda chindanariyamo.
What is the thought of man?
Orikyal adayappattadu pinathorakatillu.
Once if it is closed, it will never open.
Endalife lo orikam ninnuvayadu pinathorakapadathillu.
What is stopped in my life once upon a time, it will never reopen.
Anganolavaru, anganolavaru oru veendum duhavartikindu.
To them, I'm telling you a word once again.
Avanavuravaya kiri.
He reopened that depths of the earth.
Avanavuravaya kiri.
He reopened the depths of the earth.
Ni pradikshichadandi opposite directionina, varikyal adanya, avan veendum thurannu.
He opened the same place where you expected to be closed.
Shathurilayartharabaniyam tharaba, oh, ida perfect dayva shabdam, shat. Oh, seeligiriniya. Duudishwigeerikindu, swigeerichu, enuduparani, appan varanjadukaariundu, direct heartil hitenududu.
The father told me that this is a message that will hit directly to the heart.
Direct ninnathodunududu.
This is a message that will touch you directly.
Orikyal annanakimay adanyaalada.
Something which was forever closed.
Namalangodichindikataila.
We will never imagine that way.
Eni adu thorakvanamka pradikshailla.
We will never expect it to open that way.
Adu bole adanyuvayada.
Because it is closed in that way.
Namaliparakshapadam veeru directionlot shadijirikya.
We are concentrating another direction to be saved.
Adindan mere opposit.
In the just opposite direction.
Orikyal thurakkatillanu ni pradikshikindu.
What you are expecting will never open.
Appan innirapri kiri vidunnu.
The father is opening it up.
Eh, avan aadiyuda uravaya kiri.
He opened the fountains of the great deep.
Swigeerichu, duudishwigeerichu. Avan aadiyuda uravaya.
The fountains of the great deep are broken up.
La tharaba ba ba shathuri biniyantara ba, leyri ma santhara ba, adanyuvayadala thurakkata. Adanyuvayadala thurakkata, adanyuvayadala eshu viddyanamathal, thuranwarata.
Everything that is closed in Jesus' name, let it be opened.
Shekhele kele kereyam tharaba ba ba ba. Eni orikyalam enikya, anganavasana mandalife varathillanu paraynayareyundu.
Anybody is saying that I will never get this opportunity ever again?
Eni orikyalam amontharindu bole, nalagalam varathillanu, wisamikindu arengilundu.
Anybody is so filled with sorrow that I will never get those good days again?
Adadanyuvoy, eni avarilothen swadikindu bole, idhavasana nuparaynayareyundu.
Anybody is saying, man of God, it's already closed forever, I'm not even looking there.
Adakka jambittu, janipavarendeelim vadiyundu nokevandu varayinu varundu.
Anybody is saying, I've left all that, I'm searching for another way.
Innirathri dayvam urappudarikya.
Tonight, the Lord is giving an assurance.
Nindalife laantanya, adinu veendum reopenjayum.
Whatever is closed in your life is going to reopen.
Ninnakoru pradikshaivillatadu dayvantorakum.
Where you are having no expectation, God is going to reopen.
Avant thurakum.
He will reopen.
Avant thurakum.
He will open.
Atmaavilarkakya urappudarinu, avant thurakum.
The Holy Spirit is giving assurance, he will open. He will open.
Oh, avant thurakum.
He will open.
Adipol sampavikata.
Let it happen right now.
Lelelele, ba 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 ba, shathuri bini bini, na tharagadari, vihantari alprabhadara, raigasaidiyam thalbarayam tharaba. Adugundana lasaranda sahodiri varanjadu, punaruthanathindan naal avan uyarkum.
That is why Lazarus' sister said he will rise up in the day of resurrection.
Adugundani adu thorakanda, akallara thorakanda.
So that is why do not open that tomb.
Nengada pradiksha pooyi.
That our expectation is gone.
Nengada pradiksha pooyi.
Our hope is gone.
Naali daysan kariyuu, nengada pradiksha pooyi.
Already four days have passed, however, we do not have any hope.
Eni adu thorakanda.
Do not open that.
Punaruthanathindan naali namakunokka.
On the day of resurrection, we will watch.
Esu varani ipam nanaagunnu punaruthanam jeevanam.
Jesus said, I am the resurrection and the life.
Ni annangana nadakunun varayinu, avan ipal thurakum, innirathri thurakum.
He will do it tonight, today.
Open the tomb, open the tomb, savakallarakal thurakkapadathay.
Open the tomb.
Oh, raasathara labaramanehamdu rabalaga shathuri bini, naatharaga shetari alprabhadiyaraba, nori hamdera leyriyam praisi. Nengalorike, nengalorike, jeevanidullam stulyam snehi chadundakio, chatu pooyi, adine kallarakagathadachuvachittu, eni adi jeevicheni kivendi varathillu, indukkarayinu aarayalundeki parayata, innirathri, ninnakvanditayvamana thurakunnu.
You have loved something so much, but today it isn't a tomb, but today the Lord is going to reopen for you.
You say that life is not going to happen?
There is no point opening that tomb.
You say that life is not going to happen?
I have loved him once upon a time.
You say that life is not going to happen?
No need to open that.
You say that life is not going to happen?
There is no use of that.
You say that life is not going to happen?
After keeping all your expectation inside the tomb.
Yes, you say that life is not going to happen?
Jesus is there inside that room, right?
You say that life is not going to happen?
Something which you loved has died.
You say that life is not going to happen?
Now there is no movement.
You say that life is not going to happen?
Now you have put it inside the tomb.
You say that life is not going to happen?
Are you saying that it will never rise again?
You say that life is not going to happen?
Tonight the Holy Spirit is telling.
You say that life is not going to happen?
Some tombs that are closed forever, Jesus is opening it today.
Yes, you say that life is not going to happen?
The Holy Spirit is telling me that word exactly.
You say that life is not going to happen?
Some tombs in some people's heart, God is opening.
You say that life is not going to happen?
The tombs of some people's future, God is opening.
You say that life is not going to happen?
Some children here whose hearts are still like closed like a tomb, Jesus Christ is opening.
You say that life is not going to happen?
Some things which we said that it is completely dead.
To bring them out. You say that life is not going to happen?
God is going to open closed tombs.
You say that life is not going to happen?
Do you have that assurance that Jesus can do it tonight?
You say that life is not going to happen?
Do you believe that Jesus can do it tonight?
You say that life is not going to happen?
Can you believe that Jesus can give you something which is lost from your hand?
You say that life is not going to happen?
Leave Danny Philip Matthew aside.
You say that life is not going to happen?
Just forget this message.
You say that life is not going to happen?
Only one word I want to ask you.
You say that life is not going to happen?
What you have lost forever.
You say that life is not going to happen?
Do you believe that Jesus will give it back to you?
You say that life is not going to happen?
So if so, you can receive this word?
You say that life is not going to happen?
Do you are going to hear miracles inside the church?
You say that life is not going to happen?
You are going to hear the testimony of miracles?
You say that life is not going to happen?
You are going to hear testimony of miracles inside the church?
You say that life is not going to happen?
Though I thought that it was lost from my hand.
You say that life is not going to happen?
I thought it is closed forever.
You say that life is not going to happen?
The church of God is reopening it tonight.
You say that life is not going to happen? Everyone declare, let it open. You say that life is not going to happen?
Let it open.
You say that life is not going to happen?
Let all financial doors open which was closed.
You say that life is not going to happen?
Let your health that was closed, let it reopen.
You say that life is not going to happen?
I believe one thing, even if you have lost your hair, God is able to give it back.
You say that life is not going to happen?
Once it is lost, the hair, it will never regrow.
You say that life is not going to happen?
But I'll give you an assurance.
You say that life is not going to happen?
Even if you have lost your hair, it will come back.
You say that life is not going to happen?
This revelation should be there inside of you.
You say that life is not going to happen? You say that life is not going to happen?
It's not that resurrection is there somewhere else.
You say that life is not going to happen?
The Pentecostals are searching for the calendar, searching for the resurrection day.
You say that life is not going to happen?
We desired for it to happen, but we are searching the calendar some other time it will happen.
You say that life is not going to happen?
The thing that she said it will happen some other time about her own brother is standing right next to her.
You say that life is not going to happen?
The church should not see Christ and Jesus in futuristic view.
You say that life is not going to happen?
It should happen right now.
You say that life is not going to happen?
It should happen today.
You say that life is not going to happen?
It will happen nights around this time.
You say that life is not going to happen?
Resurrection will happen right now here.
You say that life is not going to happen? Life, life, life is not going to happen?
Life is standing here.
You say that life is not going to happen?
All the things that you have dropped your hands.
You say that life is not going to happen?
Extraordinary deliverance is happening.
Oh, Shakala Ramana, Hanta Ralla Ba Shathuri Biri Ba Rasa Trittam Thiribi. You say that life is not going to happen?
I do not know if it's wrong, but I demand something from the Holy Spirit.
You say that life is not going to happen?
I told the Lord, Lord, I'm right now in Oman.
You say that life is not going to happen?
I did not come, the church brought me here.
You say that life is not going to happen?
There is a lot of expense.
You say that life is not going to happen?
Don't send me there just to preach and go.
You say that life is not going to happen?
There should be a major turnaround.
You say that life is not going to happen?
I said if I do not see that, I do not want the offering from here.
You say that life is not going to happen?
Are you sitting here to hear a message?
You say that life is not going to happen?
There are so many messages in YouTube.
You say that life is not going to happen?
Don't call me to hear that.
You say that life is not going to happen?
I told my father, if God wants to do something, you should do it this month.
You say that life is not going to happen?
I am sure that the Lord will do it.
You say that life is not going to happen?
I did not come here for money.
You say that life is not going to happen?
God will do it here.
You say that life is not going to happen?
My father will do it here.
You say that life is not going to happen?
Though your resurrection is not happening.
You say that life is not going to happen?
It will happen today.
You say that life is not going to happen? Oh, your child is better. You say that life is not going to happen?
Some parents are saying my child will become better.
You say that life is not going to happen?
He should be better today.
You say that life is not going to happen?
He should be reformed today in this second.
You say that life is not going to happen?
This second Christ should touch him.
You say that life is not going to happen?
Leave the futuristic view.
You say that life is not going to happen?
Leave the saying that it will happen sometime.
You say that life is not going to happen?
Resurrection and life is standing right in front of you.
You say that life is not going to happen?
Resurrection and life is standing right in front of you.
You say that life is not going to happen?
So the church of God is declaring together everything that is closed in MPF, ready reopen.
You say that life is not going to happen?
Let it reopen in MPF.
You say that life is not going to happen?
Let it open in MPF.
You say that life is not going to happen? You say that life is not going to happen? You say that life is not going to happen? You say that life is not going to happen? You say that life is not going to happen?
I want to ask you a question, answer me very truthfully.
You say that life is not going to happen?
Don't tell me the faith, but tell me what is exactly the fact.
You say that life is not going to happen?
Anybody seated here who are saying that I had a good time once upon a time, but it is closed.
You say that life is not going to happen?
Leave the faith aside.
You say that life is not going to happen?
Let spirituality, we'll keep it aside.
You say that life is not going to happen?
Anybody like with circumstance like that?
You say that life is not going to happen?
Raise up your hands.
You say that life is not going to happen?
I have also raised my hand.
You say that life is not going to happen?
But I have an assurance.
You say that life is not going to happen?
My father has passed away.
You say that life is not going to happen?
There was a good time that I had when my father was alive.
You say that life is not going to happen?
I could just have my food easily.
You say that life is not going to happen?
I didn't have to search for anything else.
You say that life is not going to happen?
I didn't have to know anything else.
You say that life is not going to happen?
My father died.
You say that life is not going to happen?
Many a times I have wondered whether I'll have those good times again.
You say that life is not going to happen?
Where I can live without any tension.
You say that life is not going to happen?
All those who have great fathers say amen.
You say that life is not going to happen?
Praise God for good fathers and mothers.
You say that life is not going to happen?
Those who do not have, they know the value of it.
You say that life is not going to happen?
Or they know that those who do not have it, they understand the loss of it.
You say that life is not going to happen?
It doesn't finish when you, after they die and you cry for three, four days.
You say that life is not going to happen?
That missing will remain till we die.
You say that life is not going to happen?
Nobody can cover that.
You say that life is not going to happen?
Only God can do it.
You say that life is not going to happen?
Always be thankful and grateful for your parents.
You say that life is not going to happen?
So I'll ask you.
You say that life is not going to happen?
Like that, a life like that will never happen, that will never reopen.
You say that life is not going to happen?
I'm not talking about faith.
You say that life is not going to happen?
All those who have a circumstance like that, can you raise your hands?
You say that life is not going to happen?
You should be hundred percent sure that it will never reopen.
You say that life is not going to happen? You say that life is not going to happen?
If you have one person chance, don't raise your hands, if you are hundred percent sure it will never happen according to circumstance, raise your hands.
Okay, I'll give you an assurance, all those who raise your hands. You say that life is not going to happen?
There was a line in the song which we sang today.
You say that life is not going to happen?
The worship team sang.
You say that life is not going to happen?
Didn't he also sing that song? He is a miraculous worker.
You say that Bible?
Do you know this is a verse in the Bible?
You say that Bible?
He is a wonderful counselor.
You say that Bible?
He is a mighty God.
You say that Bible?
He is everlasting Father.
You say that Bible?
He is a prince of peace.
You say that Bible?
When we talk about the wonderful counselor.
You say that Bible?
When you talk about the wonderful counselor.
You say that Bible?
When you say foot ministry, foot minister.
You say that Bible?
That means he, the food is, the thing of the food is in his hand.
You say that Bible?
It is under his authority, food.
You say that Bible?
All the authorities upon him.
You say that Bible?
We are calling him a miraculous worker.
You say that Bible?
All the miracles are under his authority.
You say that life is not going to happen? You say that life is not going to happen?
Do you know what is a miracle?
You say that life is not going to happen?
Do you know what is a miracle?
You say that life is not going to happen?
Do you know what is a miracle?
You say that life is not going to happen?
I'll tell you an example which I always tell.
You say that life is not going to happen?
I'll tell you the same thing.
You say that life is not going to happen?
The assurance.
You say that life is not going to happen? You say that life is not going to happen?
If you are sure that something will never happen, it's hundred percent sure it will never happen.
You say that life is not going to happen?
That assurance is that you, the miracle will happen.
You say that life is not going to happen?
Will you agree if I push this podium down and say, I say that I did a miracle?
You say that life is not going to happen?
That's not a miracle.
You say that life is not going to happen?
Any child can even touch with a finger, it will fall down.
You say that life is not going to happen?
That's not a miracle.
You say that life is not going to happen?
It is possible to happen.
You say that life is not going to happen?
That is not a miracle.
You say that life is not going to happen?
If I say that if I point and this building will fall, will you agree to that?
You say that life is not going to happen?
Will it happen?
You say that life is not going to happen?
If I point this finger towards this building, will it fall down?
You say that life is not going to happen?
If I kick this building, will it fall?
You say that life is not going to happen?
It will not fall.
You say that life is not going to happen?
It will never happen, you will not agree.
You say that life is not going to happen?
But what if I point and it falls down?
You say that life is not going to happen?
That is a miracle.
You say that life is not going to happen?
When you are very sure that something will never happen and that happens, that is a miracle.
You say that life is not going to happen?
If you are sure that even one person chance is not there, what is closed will open.
You say that life is not going to happen?
That assurance is a hundred percent assurance of miracle.
You say that life is not going to happen?
If you are sure that your circumstances, what is closed will never open.
You say that life is not going to happen?
Not with faith, but with circumstance, if you think that it will never open.
You say that life is not going to happen?
He is a miracle worker.
You say that life is not going to happen?
He is the one who will do something which we are very sure will never happen.
You say that life is not going to happen?
What is impossible with man is possible with God.
You say that life is not going to happen?
Looking at circumstance, you say that it is impossible, that's why God will say, this is where I want to work.
You say that life is not going to happen?
How many times we have said, looking at the situation, it will never happen?
You say that life is not going to happen?
Do not turn back from there, stay there.
You say that life is not going to happen?
Looking at the circumstance, do not say that it will never happen, stay there.
Because. You say that life is not going to happen?
God works his possibilities upon impossibilities.
You say that life is not going to happen?
What is under his authority is miracles.
You say that life is not going to happen?
There is a place that has to happen.
You say that life is not going to happen?
Miracles will not happen everywhere.
You say that life is not going to happen?
When you push this podium down, that is not the place where miracle has to happen.
You say that life is not going to happen?
But where we point and it will fall, that's where the miracle has to happen.
You say that life is not going to happen?
Lord, it has gone from my hand, are you sure it will not come back?
You say that life is not going to happen?
That is the ground of God.
You say that life is not going to happen?
That is the ground where God works.
You say that life is not going to happen?
This is the ground where God works.
You say that life is not going to happen?
That is a place of God.
You say that life is not going to happen?
Say to the person next to you, it is going to open again.
You say that life is not going to happen?
Everybody seated here, something which was good has closed.
You say that life is not going to happen?
Many a times it has closed.
You say that life is not going to happen?
What is the specialty of the fountains of the deep?
You say that life is not going to happen?
The God limited that.
You say that life is not going to happen?
God limited that.
You say that life is not going to happen?
That God broke it up.
You say that life is not going to happen?
It's not even said it is opened.
You say that life is not going to happen?
It says that it was broken up.
You say that life is not going to happen? You say that life is not going to happen?
In the New Testament, we see a sister, she broke alabaster oil at the feet of Jesus.
You say that life is not going to happen?
She broke it at the feet of Jesus on the floor.
You say that life is not going to happen?
It's not that she opened it and poured it on the feet of Jesus.
You say that life is not going to happen?
She broke it at the feet of Jesus.
You say that life is not going to happen?
Which means it should never be able to close again.
You say that life is not going to happen?
I should not be able to use that bottle again.
You say that life is not going to happen?
She was a prostitute.
You say that life is not going to happen?
That was a perfume that she had used to put it on herself.
You say that life is not going to happen?
It was very valuable.
You say that life is not going to happen?
She bought that bottle to keep that perfume.
You say that life is not going to happen?
What she was earning with that job, she was keeping it in that bottle.
You say that life is not going to happen?
If you open it and pour it, which means you can reuse it.
You say that life is not going to happen?
Once you buy a Horlicks bottle jar, will you break that bottle and take the Horlicks from there?
You say that life is not going to happen?
After the Horlicks is over, we have to fill it with that jar.
You say that life is not going to happen?
That's why we will open it and take.
You say that life is not going to happen?
We will not break it.
You say that life is not going to happen?
That means the bottle is required again.
You say that life is not going to happen?
Once she got repented, she did not reopen it and pour it.
You say that life is not going to happen?
She broke it.
You say that life is not going to happen?
She broke it on the floor.
You say that life is not going to happen?
She broke it completely and smashed it.
You say that life is not going to happen?
Declare it, she broke it and smashed it.
You say that life is not going to happen?
She smashed it.
You say that life is not going to happen?
This is the work that Jesus did.
You say that life is not going to happen?
He destroyed him.
You say that life is not going to happen?
And he completely surrendered.
You say that life is not going to happen?
And he broke it.
You say that life is not going to happen?
Not that he poured it.
You say that life is not going to happen?
Even his head was broken on the cross of Calvary.
You say that life is not going to happen?
If God is doing something for us.
You say that life is not going to happen?
If God is doing something for us. There is a sacrifice of blood in India.
You say that life is not going to happen?
Jesus completely broke it and poured it out.
You say that life is not going to happen?
He was torn.
You say that life is not going to happen?
He was torn.
You say that life is not going to happen?
Did you know where we stopped yesterday?
You say that life is not going to happen? Rain. You say that life is not going to happen? Rain. You say that life is not going to happen?
They don't know what rain is.
You say that life is not going to happen?
That's why nobody entered the ark.
You say that life is not going to happen?
They don't know what rain is.
You say that life is not going to happen?
So they didn't enter the ark?
You say that life is not going to happen?
So people who come into, enter the ark, they will ask what rain is.
You say that life is not going to happen?
No, it doesn't know what rain is, it doesn't know how to explain it.
You say that life is not going to happen?
So there is no need to enter into the ark which they do not know about?
You say that life is not going to happen?
That is the truth.
You say that life is not going to happen?
Isn't that the truth?
You say that life is not going to happen?
There is another name for the rain.
You say that life is not going to happen?
The name that God gave.
You say that life is not going to happen?
Do you know what it is?
You say that life is not going to happen?
That is judgment.
You say that life is not going to happen?
The name that God gave for rain was judgment.
You say that life is not going to happen?
No, it doesn't know how to explain judgment.
You say that life is not going to happen?
No, only priest that he will, there will be judgment, he will judge.
You say that life is not going to happen?
Only he judged that there will be rain.
You say that life is not going to happen?
No, couldn't explain what rain was.
You say that life is not going to happen?
If God would have showed, this is how the flood is going to come, I'm going to destroy like this, everyone would have been inside the ark.
You say that life is not going to happen?
He did not show, nobody knew the seriousness, nobody entered.
You say that life is not going to happen?
Because they did not know how big the judgment was, they did not want the salvation.
You say that life is not going to happen?
They did not know how great or serious was the judgment, they did not want to be saved.
You say that life is not going to happen?
They did not know what rain was.
You say that life is not going to happen?
They did not know what rain was.
You say that life is not going to happen?
So in the New Testament, God changed the idea.
You say that life is not going to happen?
He showed how the rain fell.
You say that life is not going to happen?
And then he opened the ark.
You say that life is not going to happen?
Do you know how?
You say that life is not going to happen?
What is the name of the ark?
You say that life is not going to happen?
That is judgment.
You say that life is not going to happen?
That is judgment.
You say that life is not going to happen?
The judgment of God.
You say that life is not going to happen?
In the beginning, God showed what judgment is like.
You say that life is not going to happen?
Do you know who it was?
You say that life is not going to happen?
Do you know through whom it was?
You say that life is not going to happen?
That was through Jesus Christ.
You say that life is not going to happen?
He showed it.
You say that life is not going to happen?
He showed them publicly what rain was like. ही शोर डेम पब्लिकली व्हाट रेन वस लाइक
देवतिन डक्रो अंदु अनु पुत्रनिल गानिच उड़
ही शोर डी रथ ऑफ गॉड त्रु डी सन
पावतिन डशंबल अंदु अनु पुत्रनिल गानिच उड़
ही शोर डी वेजेस ऑफ सिन त्रु डी सन
इधु लोगत आदिम गानिच
ही शोर डी वर्ल्ड दिस फर्स्ट
इन्नट पटराति रक्षा वड़ पटराति तोरन वच्चु
एंड देन ही ओपन डी आर्क ऑफ सलवेशन
इप्पन नमल माले इंदु वन परय
नाव वी विल से व्हाट इस डी रेन
घुशी करन इंदु वन परय
वी विल टेल डेम व्हाट इस क्रूसिफिक्शन
ये शुन नमक वेंड मारिचन न परय
वी विल टेल डेम डेट जीसस डाइड फॉर अस
इधु परनिट नमल पटराति केट
एंड देन वी विल एंटर डेम इन डी आर्क
ओ मानसल आमराम बरा इधिन नाचर्ची नोड अल्लाह प्रसंगिक्य न कलो कारम आडिच गुण आहा रीबा शतुरल बरमन नथुरमन अगशतुरिया प्राइदस्मानी लेरिया शतुरल अगशंतर अबन अगदा नोरियम तालबरियम शेत्राइदस्मातुरिबी निंगल केन दंगिल मनसल आयो
डिया अंडस्टैंड एनीथिंग
कोरचंगिल निंगल मनसल आयो
एटलीस अबेट
ओल्डरी देव आदिम न्यायविदी इंदु अनु पुत्रनिल अंग गानिच
ओल्डरी गॉड शोर व्हाट जजमेंट वस लाइक त्रु डी सन
कारणम परेश्यमतल अगत इधार रियत तोड़ गुण पटराति केर आदिरन तिरिपेर उड
बिकॉज़ इन डी ओल्ड टेस्टमेंट मेनी वर डेट बिकॉज़ देट डिनॉट नो व्हाट जजमेंट इस लाइक देट डिनॉट एंटर डी आर्क
अदुन रक्षा वड़ पटराति इन्ने आशयम वरिन्न अदिन मुंबे
सो बिफोर डी आइडिया ऑफ डी आर्क ऑफ सलवेशन कम्स
अपन माले इंदु अंग गानिच
फादर शोर व्हाट रेन वस लाइक
अवन परेश्यमाई नुरकपट
एंड ही वस ब्रोकन कंप्लीट पब्लिकली
अवन परेश्यमाई नुरकपट
ही वस ब्रोकन पब्लिकली
रक्षा वड़ पटराति आटचिट अल्ला
नॉट आफ्टर क्लोजिंग डी आर्क ऑफ सलवेशन
देवन न्यायविदी इंदु अनु गानिच अद
ही शोर डेट व्हाट जजमेंट वस लाइक
परेश्यमतल पटराति आटचिट न्यायविदी इंदु अनु गानिच अद
आई इन डी ओल्ड टेस्टमेंट ही क्लोज डी आर्क एंड देन शोर व्हाट जजमेंट वस लाइक
नोहे डा कालगत डी कालगत तल शिक्षा इंदु अनु नरियन तिन मुंबे रक्षा पड़न अल्ला वाय आटन्य
बिफोर देट नो न्यू व्हाट हाव व्हाट डी जजमेंट वस लाइक डी वे ऑफ सलवेशन वस क्लोज इन डी टाइम्स ऑफ नोहा
आटचिट तुम अवसर उड़न आर्न अंदोनु एयर दिवस
आफ्टर क्लोजिंग आई थिंक देव वस डी टाइम अरु ओपरचुनिटी फॉर सेवन डेज
एयर दिवसम माले वेदित ल्ला
फॉर सेवन डेज देव वस नो रेन
एयर दिवसम आजीड़ उरवकीरी ल्ला
इट्स सेवन डेज डी फाउंटेन्स ऑफ डी डीप वन नॉट ब्रोकन अप
इन्न वच्चल रक्षा वड़ पटराति नागत केरियतुम अवर शिक्षा इंदु अनु कंडिट ल्ला
व्हिच मींस डेट इवन दो देक डी आफ्टर एंटर इन डी आर्क देट डिनॉट सी व्हाट डी जजमेंट वस लाइक
पुदियनीमतल
बट इन डी न्यू टेस्टमेंट
पटराति तोरन वेकिन्न अदिन मुंबे शिक्षा इंदु अनु गानिच
बिफोर डी आर्क वस ओपन देस ही शोर व्हाट डी जजमेंट वस लाइक
अद कंडत वंडा नमली पटराति केरियत
बिकॉज़ वी सो डेट वी एंटर डी आर्क
अल्लेंकिन नमल गेरत ल्ला
अदर वाइस वी वुल अस नॉट एंटर
ये शु अनिपविच अद नमक वेंड अनिपविच अद कंडत वंडा नमली रक्षा वड़ पटराति नागत केरियत
बिकॉज़ वी सो व्हाट जीसस एक्सपीरियंस फॉर अस वी एंटर इन डी आर्क ऑफ सलवेशन
इल्लेंकिन नमल केरत ल्ला
अदर वाइस वी वुड इंट एंटर
इल्ले केरत ल्ला
अदर वाइस वी वुड इंट एंटर
पुदियनीम सभक्य अल्ला प्रसंगतिन्डे प्रसंगतिन्डे प्रस केटो पुदियनीम सभक्य अल्ला प्रसंगतिन्डे क्वालिटी इंदु नरिया
डिन नो व्हाट इस डी क्वालिटी ऑफ डी न्यू टेस्टमेंट प्रीचिंग
नमल प्रसंगतिन्डा अगत माले इंदु नमल प्रसंगिक
वी विल प्रीच व्हाट इस रेन
नोहे कादिन ल्ला भागिंग इट ल्ला
नोहा डिनॉट हैव डेट ओपरचुनिटी
अवन इकानाम बटिल
ही कुड एन सी डेट
अदुन पटराति केरन तिरिवर काव आंग्रह उड़न आर्न आर्क बश अवर गरी
सो मेनी पीपल इवन दो देव वांटेड तू देव कुड एंटर इन
ये शु मारिच अद नी परय
यू शोर टेल डेट जीसस डाइड
ये शु क्रूशिक्या पट्टा द निंद नाव गुण नी परय
विथ डी टंग यू शोर डी जीसस वस क्रूसिफाइड
रक्षिक्या पड़गन ल्ला आदिम परय
नॉट से डो नॉट से डेट यू शोर बी सेव्ड फर्स्ट
निनक पागर उड़तन शिक्षा अनिपविच उन आदिम परय
फर्स्ट यू शोर डी डेट सम्बडी डाइड इन योर प्लेस
परेश्यमतल अगत नोहे इंदु परन नरिया
डिन नो इन डी ओल्ड टेस्टमेंट व्हाट नोहा सेड
प्रलयत्तीन रक्षा वरामिन्ड पटराति केर
वो तू एसके फ्रॉम डी फ्लड एंटर डी आर्क
पुदियनीम इंदु नरिया
डिन नो व्हाट इस डी न्यू टेस्टमेंट
निनक पागर उड़तन मारिच अद गुण नी रक्षा पट्टु केरिकोल
बिकॉज़ सम्बडी डाइड इन योर प्लेस यू आर सेव्ड एंटर इन
वेत्तियासम मनसल आयो आमराम परन
वो सो अंडस्टैंड डी डिफरेंस एम
परेश्यम इंदु नरिया
डिन नो व्हाट इस डी ओल्ड टेस्टमेंट
निंगल केक नुड अंडा कोर उडो
आर यू विथ मी
दूधले के पाव निंगल अंडा कोर उडो
आर यू विथ मी
ओन्न उड़ परय
अगेन आई विल यू
शिक्षा इल निन रक्षा वराम पटराति केर अद परेश्यम
डी ओल्ड टेस्टमेंट से तू एसके फ्रॉम डी पनिशमेंट एंटर डी आर्क
ओटी बोट परेश्यम बोट नोहे ना कालगत
इन डी टाइम्स ऑफ नोहा
पुदियनीमतल उल नमक उल रुकून उड़न नरिया
डिन नो व्हाट इस डी अवर ब्लेसिंग इन डी न्यू टेस्टमेंट
शिक्षा एडुत नमल गानिक जनतिन्डा मुंबे
वी विल शो डी जजमेंट बिफोर डी पीपल
देव सभा ये शु नमक वेंड अनिपविच अमाले डा तंग गानिक
वी विल शो व्हाट जीसस डेड फॉर डी चर्च
इधिन अगत निन्ने रक्षिच चोरितन उड़न न परय
यू विल टेल डेम डेट सम्बडी सेव्ड यू फ्रॉम दिस
इम माले नी अनिपविक्य अंदार इन न परय
वी विल टेल डेम दिस रेन यू शोर हैव एक्सपीरियंस
इधिन अगत निरक्षिच कालिन्यू इनी केरिकोल आम परय
नाव यू आर सेव्ड फ्रॉम दिस नाव यू कैन एंटर इन
इदा नमक के गिट या भागिय
दिस इस अवर ब्लेसिंग
इदा नमक के गिट या भागिय
दिस इस डी ब्लेसिंग डेट वी गॉड
इधु ल्ला तुम डानी इप्पा इवड़ा निक्किन
बिकॉज़ इट्स डेट डेट्स व्हाय डानी इस योर
करन एन उड़ पाल आर्यम परन
बिकॉज़ मेनी टोल्ड मी
नन्नागड़ा 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 नन्नागड़ा
मेनी पीपल टोल्ड मी तू बी बेटर
नान नन्नाइल
आई वस आई नेवर गॉट बेटर
इनी के रेंगाउंड रण आई पर देव इंदु देव उड़न नी बिडिट
बट आई हैड एन एंकाउंट आई अंडस्टैंड डी डेट गॉड इस डेट
But this salvation is not understood.
Do you know when I entered into this thing called salvation?
When the Holy Spirit showed the crucifixion before me. Do you want to love Jesus a lot? You should be able to see how God loved you and demonstrated his love for you. That's what you saw.
Only if you see that you can put your feet firmly into the salvation.
You want to be firm in the salvation. Do you want to catch Oman into the salvation? Do you want to put musket into the ark? Yes, you should tell.
Explain what Jesus experienced.
Yes, you should tell.
Tell what Jesus experienced.
That is the gospel. That is the gospel. Hey, come on!
Noah did not have a gospel to tell.
Noah did not have a good news to tell. Noah explained or preached something very terrible. It was not a good news. It was a chance for the people. If you don't escape from the punishment, enter in. But gospel is not like that. Because he loves you, enter in. What is the speciality of the law?
That's what the law says.
If you don't want to be punished, get inside the ark. If you don't want to be punished, obey. If you don't want to be punished, you come into the presence of God. This is the ark of Noah.
But what is the gospel? What is salvation?
Because somebody took the beating for you, enter in.
Because somebody died for you, you enter in.
All those have seen the love of Christ, respond! I'm going to conclude.
Can we read that portion again?
Genesis 8:45. It's a great mystery in that verse. All right, let's go. Everyone, what date do you think? Okay, sis, we're going to look at it, but everyone, what date do you think? 7 months, 17 days. What month is it?
Which month?
What month is it?
Which month?
7 months.
The 7th month.
Verse 5. After the ark rested on the mount of Ararat. Till the 10th month, the water is decreasing. So how many months have gone? 3 months have passed. After the ark rested on Mount Ararat, the water was continuously going down for 3 months.
Next verse.
10 months, I can't see other mountains.
The 10th month, on the first day of the month, the tops of the mountains were seen.
On the 7th month, the top of the Mount Ararat, it was there. Then 3 months, the water was decreasing.
After 3 months of the water reducing, the next top of the mountain was seen.
Can you imagine the height of Mount Ararat? Can you imagine the height of Mount Ararat? The other tops of the mountains were seen after 3 months. Before that, the ark rested on the top of Mount Ararat. Can you imagine the height of Mount Ararat?
When he was building on the outside of his home. Some people asked him, how will you lift this up if you build it here? Some people said, it will never work here. Even after listening to that, Noah continued to build.
Noah couldn't answer how he will take this to the shore. But still, he believed in God and continued to build. Because where are you standing right now?
You are on the top of Mount Ararat.
Some people said, you cannot do it. Some people said, it will not happen with your hands. Some people said, it won't be successful here. Still, he will obey.
This word that I give you.
The ark was resting on the Mount Ararat. The ark rested on the Mount Ararat. It was not on any small mountain. It was not on any stone. It was not on a small hill. It was on the highest mountain in the world!
Everyone rise to your feet. I'm going to conclude my message.
Listen to me. There are places where you cannot answer. Some places which you do not know. Place faith in God there.
Not only faith, obedience also is required. Not just faith, you have to continue to doing what God said to do.
There should be progress in the work.
There will be words that will weary you down.
Maybe people are working with you, maybe they will not join you again.
Because you are not able to explain what rain is.
If you keep faith there. If you keep obedience there.
Your ark will not rest on any other mountain but Ararat.
Sadhijay. Can you tell?
The ark rested on Mount Ararat. Can you bring that picture in your mind? The entire earth is covered with water.
It is completely destroyed.
Nothing can be seen.
One thing can be seen. A person who obeyed and the ark that was built by him, it is lifted high. If you obey in the place where God has placed you. Everything else will be under. All those who mocked and made fun of, they were all under. If you obey, you will be high up. But like in the Old Testament. Because we cannot explain what rain is. Because Noah couldn't explain what judgment is like.
People should not perish. In the New Testament.
Jesus showed. The wrath of God, the father.
The word of God says.
That he carried the wrath of the father upon him. That he carried the fury. Into the ark that God has given to you. Because a person doesn't know what judgment is like, they should not escape or they should not come, not avoid the salvation. You should talk about the cross. You should talk about what Jesus broke for us. You should tell what he did publicly, that he was broken publicly. You should tell him he experienced that for you and for me. You should show him the door of the ark that is open for him for salvation.
Every eye closed in the presence of God.
Let the people enter to the depths of the Lord God. Let the people be able to see what he experienced for us. Let him establish the love of the ark of love. From the bottom of your hearts. And the love of God moves people's hearts. Everything that is blocking, let it be released. Let may you be able to see something that is something searching for you, which you thought is not. What you thought will never reopen, let it reopen right now for you. That's what you said.
Can we see that in our spirit?
That's what you said.
There is nothing that he cannot do for you.
The father who did not touch, did not even his own son to be saved for us. Alone with that, all things. Alone with him, all things. Alone with him, all things. Alone with him, all things. The name of God is moving. The name of God is moving. The name of God is moving. The name of God is moving.
The name of God is moving.
The name of God is moving.
Let the love of the cross flow here. Let love be filled here.
Thank you, Lord. Today, the Lord has said.
I didn't want to repeat everything. You have understood and you have listened intently.
About the love God. About the salvation. What the Lord has done for us. About the finished work of the cross. About the gospel.
We already heard it.
Can we submit ourselves before the love of Jesus? But I don't want to repeat it.
The man of God was unable to speak the word.
Praise God for Pastor Danny. Can we pray that God will fill him with much revelation and keep him in strength? Can we praise God for his family? Shall we pray? Daddy, today, we will celebrate.
Daddy, as a church, we submit ourselves tonight.
Daddy, we thank you for the word that you were enabled to hear, Lord. We thank you for the revelations that you have given it through your son, Lord.
The church receives it.
Yes, we commit ourselves to explain to the world the finished work of the Lord Jesus Christ. Thank you for strengthening the man of God. The church, as a church, we completely surrender ourselves before God. We thank you that Oman and Musket are entering into the ark. We thank you for great miracles, Lord. What we said that it will never happen, thank you, it's going to happen, Lord. What we said that it is impossible, we thank you, it is going to happen. We thank you that where we are fed up and we left it, thank you that God's work is beginning there. We thank you for the great revival. We are leaving, thank you, your presence is there with us. In the name of Jesus, a fortress in the name of Jesus, we cover every family and every person, Lord. Thank you for blessing us. In Jesus' name, we pray. Everybody, say, "Praise God!" In the name of Jesus, a fortress in the name of Jesus, we cover every family and every person, Lord. Thank you for blessing us. In Jesus' name, we pray. Everybody, say, "Praise God!" If you want to praise God, say, "Praise God!" God bless you. Tomorrow night, once again, we will meet here at 8 o'clock. God bless you all.